20th, 2017, meeting of the Planning Commission. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I'm going to go ahead and ask staff to call roll call.
Vice Chair Sardosa.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
It's noted that Chair Roby and Member Wolf are absent.
Okay, we have a quorum established, so let's move on to item one, the consent calendar. Item 1.1, the agenda, 1.2, the minutes, and I am going to recommend we pull item 6.1, the zoning amendments for front yard fencing, wall, and use restrictions. I think we need the full complement, or at least the four-fifths complement of the board as we make that recommendation, so if that's...
Motion. I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Just for a point of order, when you pulled it, are you expected to continue that item to a date certain?
To the next meeting.
Next meeting?
When we have...
Okay.
Thank you.
...four commissioners. Okay, moving on then to item three.
Point of interest, Chairman.
Yes.
Move we adopt the minutes as presented?
Oh, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No items were pulled.
Mr. Chairman, staff would like to recommend on that continuance that you continue it to a date certain. That way, we're not then going to require to go through the advertising, and there's a lot of expense to doing that. So we recommend that you would continue that to July 8, your meeting, your regular meeting of July 18. Item 6.1.
To July 18?
Yes.
That's right. Okay. Do we need to make it, do we need to amend the motion, or can we just...
By consent of the members present would be fine, for the record.
July 18.
July 18, okay. Okay, moving on to item three. These are items of interest to the public, public comments for things that are not on the agenda. This is the time for, if you have anything you'd like to comment on to the commission that's not on the agenda. Okay, seeing no comments, communications to commission, item four.
There are two items, or two communications provided to you at the dais. They were received and are for the item 5.1 on tonight's agenda. They relate to the 425 Main Street project. One is from an email from Dave Machado. The second is a hand message from Roy Renfro and Maggie Renfro, also regarding the 425 Main Street project.
Any questions? Okay, move on to item five, new business. Item 5.1, 425 Main Street Site Plan Review 16-06. And this is a request for a site plan review for the construction of pedestrian footbridge over Hangtown Creek for the Powell Steamer Company business. Does staff have a report?
We do. Tonight's request is made by Les and Gail Russell. They are the property owners of the building at 425 Main Street, which is also known as the Lower Fairchild Building. As the vice chair mentioned, this request tonight is for site plan review. It is for the construction of a pedestrian footbridge over Hangtown Creek, and it would be off the rear deck of that commercial building. Construction includes a bridge footing that would be constructed on city property along the north bank of the creek to anchor the footbridge. The footbridge would serve the first floor Powell Steamer Company business, the restaurant and bar. The purpose of that footbridge is to allow required egress to increase the building occupancy for more than 49 persons. The requested construction would encroach into the Hangtown Creek drainage, and under section 8-3-28 of City Code, the construction or reconstruction of a structure in the creek area requires site plan review approval by the Planning Commission, and that would be subject to our site plan review section of 1049 of City Code. The Lower Fairchild Building has two stories and contains the addresses of 425, 429, and 433 Main Street. It is listed on the city's historic resource inventory. Construction of the building dates to the early 1900s. The building and adjacent commercial buildings are located within what's called the city's central business district. Attachment two of staff's report is the applicant's submittal package. Excuse me. The packaging, it consists of the proposed site plan, site survey information, and engineering details for the footbridge. Just for the record and for the people in the audience, those same graphics and documents are on the wall behind the Planning Commission this evening. The footbridge would have a structural steel framework, have text composite decking surface, a guard consisting of pressure-treated dug-for 4x4 posts and railings with a chain link fencing and footbridge gate. The applicant's site survey information indicates the footbridge support structure and the bridge deck would be within the creek's, the Hangtown Creek floodplain elevation inundated during a 100-year flood event. Staff evaluated the request for consistency with relevant goals and policies of the general plan and its health and safety and community design sections for their, for its consistency with the zoning ordinance, including the site plan review design criteria, as well as city staff's access to the city's existing sewer manhole, which is located below the existing and permitted deck. Staff found the request consistent with Goal C and Policy 3 of Goal C of the General Plan Health and Safety Section, which calls for the prevention of damage and loss of life, or lives of life during flooding. It is also consistent with Goal B and Policy 5 of Goal B of the Community Design Section that calls for the enhancement of pedestrian convenience and safety in the development of projects. The intended purpose of the footbridge is to provide an additional building egress for the Powell's business to accommodate building occupancy of more than 49 persons. Furthermore, the proposed metal and pressure-treated materials are flood-proof to prevent damage from a 100-year flood event, and the request would therefore enhance pedestrian convenience and safety as well as flood damage protection. The request is also consistent with Goal I and Policy 1 of Goal I of the Community Design Section, as well as the site plan review design criteria. These call for the promotion of architectural quality in downtown Placerville, and that design improvements contribute to better pedestrian convenience and safety. The proposed footbridge design, materials, and appearance are positive. They would not detract from the nature or character of the adjacent development. The composite trex footbridge walkway decking would match that used on the existing building's exterior deck. Similarly, the building deck posts and the footbridge deck posts use the same pressure-treated lumber and are therefore compatible and consistent with the site plan review design criteria. The proposed footbridge alignment, however, would obstruct the city's staff's access to the existing sewer manhole, which again is located within the Hangtown Creek drainage and below the existing deck to the rear of the building. The requested location for the footbridge support structure would limit staff's access to this manhole. Staff therefore has conditioned the request to require the alignment of the footbridge be shifted to the west and still along the existing deck at a final location acceptable to the city's community and development services departments. Staff has found their request is exempt from environmental review under the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act. The request would involve a minor alteration to the Lower Fairchild Building due to the attachment of the footbridge support structure but below the existing deck. Also, the footbridge is a minor structure that would be accessory to the existing commercial use, which is also a category for this exemption. The request therefore is exempt from the CEQA guidelines. Staff has developed findings in support of the site plan review approval for the commission's consideration. These are located on page six of staff's report. Staff further recommends conditional approval, including two notable conditions, number two and number three. These relate to the applicant is required to obtain an encroachment permit from the city engineer. The footbridge alignment must be shifted to not reduce access to the city's sewer manhole, and that the footbridge plans are subject to review and approval by the city prior to issuance of a building permit.
Mr. Vice Chairman, the property owner is in the audience this evening, and I believe he wishes to address the commission this evening.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'm Les Russell. Gail Russell is here. We own the building. I'll give you just a little history. There had been a bridge there, we don't know how many years. We have a picture of it that looks like it might have been there for a long, long time. There used to be parking across the creek when that was before Highway 50 was expanded for the third lane, and that when the third lane came in, there's no longer parking there. So when we built the new deck about six years ago, I was convinced by the city building inspector who was no longer with the city that the bridge served no purpose. If there was no parking there, there couldn't be deliveries, there was no purpose to build the bridge. So we didn't build the bridge. We built a new deck at a cost of about $20,000, and that was sorely, sorely needed. The old bridge, the old deck was really in disrepair, so it wasn't repairable. Fast forward about four years or so, last summer, the fire department made an inspection of the property, and they hadn't been there for quite some time, and they discovered, determined that the bridge served as a second emergency exit for the restaurant. And so they required the owners, the business people that own the Powells, Sheila and Tim Kelly, to remove some tables and remove chairs. So the occupancy was reduced, and I'm not exactly sure the number, how much it was reduced. I'm sure that Timber Sheila could tell you that. So since it was required for the business to, you know, not lose occupancy, we went ahead immediately and hired an engineer to design the bridge. We also, the bridges, the steel skeleton of the bridge has already been built. It's sitting in a welding shop down in Shingle Springs. I've already acquired a permit from Caltrans because we're going to have to block one lane for about an hour so we can pick the bridge up and put it into place. So we're all set to go, and it's not for my benefit or Gail's benefit. This is to benefit the business. And I don't know if it's public, well, I know it's public knowledge, but they suffered quite extensive, serious, very serious embezzlement about two and a half years ago, and they're already, you know, just kind of keeping going and trying to dig their way out of that. So we need to restore the occupancy for the restaurant. It's really important to them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for explaining what the crane location was on the site plan diagram, because I was puzzled of what the heck is a crane for? That's the Caltrans permit for the raising of the bridge.
That was obtained, and we're all set to go. We'll probably use diamond crane, and we have to have traffic control. I mean, Caltrans is very explicit about what we have to do.
Okay, so I do have, if I may, the main question I had, Les, and it's good to see you again. I've always looked forward to the day you might come in front of the commission for something, so I've really got some hard questions for you. No, actually, is there a reason you chose the specific location for the bridge as to one side of the deck as opposed to the center of the other side? And this is kind of related to a couple of comments that Andrew referenced. Communications we got, there was some concern by one person that if it's, if the bridge has railing, it may prevent the opening of their, the door from their building, which is adjacent to the proposed location. And then a second communication was worded, it was a little bit tough to follow, but I think their concern is the bridge may make it easier for people to get up on the roofs of some of the buildings. So is it necessary for it to be located as presented, or do you have flexibility in terms where you can move it?
I'm glad you asked that. Initially, we put it over to the east portion of the deck to keep as much of the creek, you know, visible as possible. From the courthouse down to, I guess, way down past the parking garage, there's only two places a person can actually walk back and see the creek, and that's where Cafe Luna used to be and our property. So I wanted to keep the bridge off to the side as much as possible, so we would have literally 35 or 36 feet of unencumbered visibility to the creek. That became a moot point when the city engineer said, "We don't want you to build the bridge over the manhole." So now we've, we will shift the bridge eight feet to the west. So that answers the question from Maggie and her husband, and it also answers the question from, about using the bridge as access to the roof. It wouldn't, the bridge is going to be 10 feet away from their building now.
And that also addresses one of the conditions. It's 2.1 about the sewer manhole.
Yes.
That's really what drives that. So eight feet to the west, does that put it, is that right in the center of the deck, or is it just eight feet?
No, it's, I'm moving it just far enough to miss the manhole.
Okay.
At the other end of the deck, and I went out and looked at that, that's right behind the kitchen of the restaurant, there are trees across the creek, so we'd have to take the trees out in order to land the bridge, and I don't want to get into that. So we're keeping it as far east as we can, and the old bridge used to be right in the center, and that was long ago, and so we'll keep it as far as we can to keep the visibility as much as we can.
The width of the bridge? I don't remember seeing the width.
Well, it's, probably the treadway is about four feet. It's, you know, enough for people to exit in case that there's an emergency. The bridge will also have a barrier at someplace on it to keep people from coming onto the deck at night when the businesses are closed, but it'll be a panic bar situation where if there is an emergency, people can always cross the bridge and get across the bridge.
And you don't necessarily want people, kind of going back to your comment about keeping the creek visible and the amenity of the creek, you don't necessarily want people hanging out on the bridge to look at the creek?
No, we, we'll figure out where the barrier's going to go. It could go way at the creek, the other side of the creek, so that people couldn't even get on the bridge from that side.
Are you going to label it on the Powell side, "Emergency exit only"?
I'm not sure.
Well, the purpose of the bridge ostensibly is to provide emergency access.
Well, there's another business on the ground floor, and of course, that's the pop art gallery, and they don't have an occupancy problem. They might have six or eight people at a time in there, so the front exit is sufficient for them. But if there were a case where the front exit might be closed in case a car came across the sidewalk and jammed into the doors, they could use the same bridge. They have a back door onto the deck, and they could use the same bridge.
Right, I guess my question was perhaps, perhaps some consideration to, for some small signage, similar to "No alcohol beyond this point," you might have a sign that says "Emergency exit only." That's really the purpose of the bridge, so that people aren't just going there and standing on the bridge to look at the fish in the creek.
That could be done, sure.
Just a consideration. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? I had one question, and I think it came up in one of the comments that we received as well, communications, and that is, as the bridge ends on the other side, what's the, is there a path, or are people sort of climbing over the embankment of the, or maybe this could be a staff question as well? Where does it drop people off at, I guess?
Well, it's certainly walkable. If you walk to the east, you go behind the two buildings, the wedding shop building, the building that's still owned by Dave Machado, and the hardware store, and it's, you know, it's an easy access, so there isn't a sidewalk necessarily there. There was mention of the propane tank that's way to the east. It's nowhere near, it's not even behind the hardware store, it's off to the east of there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not sure that a Sheila or Tim might want to add something, but again, it's to help their business. We want to restore the occupancy that they lost.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public on this item?
I'd like to say so.
If you'd come forward and if you want to voluntarily state your name.
My name's Tim Kelly. My wife and I own Powell Steamers. And the one point that I'd really like to make up to you guys to get you to understand is that this isn't just to benefit our occupancy. The original bridge was built for egress out the back of the building, and I've talked with the fire captain up in Camino several times about this, and the egress out of that building is, that's why that bridge was originally built there, and that's the most important reason for you guys to allow this project to go forward. It's not just Powell Steamers wanting more occupancy. There's several businesses upstairs that have a fire escape down onto our back deck, and there's no place for them to go if in an event a car crashed into the front of the building and burst into flames. There's no way out of that building in that event, and I really believe that it's very important to consider the egress for what the fire department's after for several different reasons.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Tim, so I do have a question then. You don't, you don't want people using, going back to what I was asking, Les, this really is emergency exit only, right? You don't want people using that for any other purpose?
Personally, I don't see a big problem with having residents and tourists come out and enjoy the Hangtown Creek. I mean, there's a huge historical significance about Hangtown Creek that people come to Placerville to investigate and learn about the reason why Eldorado County has become so popular over the years. I mean, the largest single migration in the world came to Eldorado County for gold.
Right, so I get that. I guess, I guess my question is, and I'm considering this also in relative to other businesses along the creek, the question is, do you want folks coming across, either just across the bridge onto your deck just because they can do that, and it's a cool place to hang out?
I personally don't want ingress from the backside. I want people to come through my front door so that we know who's there and that type of thing.
All right.
As far as people going out onto the bridge to look over and look at fish and, you know, look for gold and whatever, I don't, I don't have a say one way or the other. I don't, I don't think that's really a consideration as to where you put the fire egress door.
Okay, thank you.
That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission. Any comments?
I'm, I think, A, I think we have to do this, number one, so the question is just some of the fine, some of the fine tuning. Right now, the fire egress door is to be located on the north side, right, where it, after it crosses the creek, and where it lands there, right? So for me, the question is, as the, as the business owner indicated, they still want people coming in through the front of the business. They don't want it, they don't want them using the backside, coming in that way, okay? So at a minimum, I would think we would want to have signage on that side. Whether we have signage on the Powell side, again, emergency exit only, you know, my preference would be to do that, I think, just because that's what the purpose of the bridge is, so, for whatever that's worth. Beyond that, I think it's all fine. We have to acknowledge, I think, just in terms of making a motion, we have to acknowledge that the, that the bridge is going to be located eight feet to the west of where the site plan review shows, just as a matter of record.
I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the signage. I think the owner and the occupants of the building will come up to a conclusion on how to handle people coming and going over the bridge. I don't know if we need to tie their hands by saying it has to be a certain way.
Do we have a motion?
I, I can make the motion, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, I need to find the file number. So I would, I would move that we approve site plan review 1606, making the findings as indicated in the staff report, and the conclusion, as stated in the conclusion page, Roman numeral one, Roman numeral two, and then the conditions of approval as stated with the notation that the bridge is going to be located eight feet to the west of where it's indicated in the site plan review.
Do we have a second? In the site plan application?
All second.
That'd be, that'd be site plan application, not site plan review in the application.
Okay. All those in favor then?
Staff, staff would make some comments on that. Staff would just like to note that, you know, basically, your purview, what you're looking at is coverage of the creek, the aesthetics, and those components of this project. Staff is not going to tell the owner whether or not customers can access that bridge.
Correct.
The bridge will be subject to an encroachment permit. So the encroachment permit is going to decide exactly the placement of that bridge on the, you know, west of the manhole cover. And so I don't want to feel like we're locked in, because we're not going to be locked in. I would just note that it'd be subject to an encroachment permit and located just west of the manhole cover instead of saying an exact eight feet, because it could be eight and a half feet or nine feet, but that's going to go through an encroachment permit. They'll submit a revised site plan showing exactly where that bridge is going, is to go. And staff also isn't going to allow customers then to have access on the other side of the creek, accepting an emergency situation.
Okay, so I want to take those two issues separately, Peter, I want to make sure I understand. So with regards to the first one, even though the applicant indicated, we're going to move it eight feet to the west, it may or may not be exactly eight feet, it's going to be ultimately determined by the site topography and what's most appropriate. So we can modify the motion if staff feels it's necessary to modify the motion to deal with that. Otherwise, you know, we'll leave it as it is. I'll take your recommendation on that.
Yeah, staff's concern would be the commission basically making a motion that it said exactly eight feet from its current location, where, you know, I would say approximately eight feet or say just west of the manhole cover.
Okay.
Because staff's going to make that determination when we grant them their encroachment permit to construct.
All right, I'll come back.
Could be eight and a half.
Nine and a half, yeah.
That's all staff wants to make it clear.
But I want to go to your second point. You said staff is going to allow people to come onto the bridge from the Highway 50 side across the creek and into the business?
No, no.
Onto the deck?
The point that staff wanted to make is that we're not going to tell the owner if they want to allow people, I mean, it's going to be a nice bridge, steel bridge, so I mean, if they want to allow people to go out on the bridge and look at the creek, you know, staff isn't going to get involved in that, but staff will not... But staff will not allow just regular access to the other side of the creek on the north side, or access from the north side. It's an emergency access only. There's no, we're not allowing pedestrians onto that side of the creek.
Right, so then let me, since, then that kind of begs the question, is there any signage that's necessary to indicate that? I mean, if you're saying staff's not going to allow, then what does that, what does that translate to? What does that really mean?
Well, I think the owner is going to indicate that this is an emergency access, emergency exit.
Yeah, we're not requiring any, any signage. So I, I think the commissioner, Les, said was, look, we'll let the business manage it the way they want to, and if they determine that the way people are using it requires us to put up a sign that says emergency access or whatever, they'll do it then, but in the meantime, they're not going to do anything. That, to me, seems a little bit different than your emphasis that you don't want people doing that would suggest to me, the way I'm hearing it, that some sort of signage actually might be required, perhaps on the Highway 50 side of this. So I'm, I'm asking you what you're, what you're looking for.
Yeah, staff hasn't gotten there yet, that, that level of detail, but I'm sure through the encroachment permit, staff will probably be requiring some sort of a signage.
So that would be, that would be the purview of staff as part of the encroachment permit?
Right.
Doesn't have to come from the commission then?
Does not.
Okay, then we'll leave it alone. And Commissioner Russell, you know darn well, public comments have been closed and you can't speak?
I was going to interrupt you. There's going to be a barrier.
We can't hear him.
Enter the bridge from the north. They can only exit from the building. We won't allow them to cross the bridge to get to the deck or the business.
How will they, how will, how will they get out from the bridge in case there's?
There'll be a panic bar.
Ah, on the, on the, on the Powell's side.
Can exit, yes, but we will not, we don't want people going over there at midnight or two o'clock in the morning
Okay.
When the business is closed and camping out on the deck.
Okay, well, that might take care of it. All right, so we'll, I'll modify my motion. I'm going to withdraw the eight feet and change that to the bridge will be located westerly of the, of the, of its placement indicated in the site plan application to be determined ultimately by the appropriate encroachment with the city.
Agreed.
Thank you. Do we, question, do we do, can we just do, can I just call the, all in favor?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that recommendation passes.
Any opposition?
Any opposition? That, that recommendation passes three zero. Okay, moving on to item number 5.2. That is the 1540 Broadway Site Plan Review 17-03 and variants 17-01 for Hangtown Range. And this project consists of a site plan review to change the occupancy of the existing automobile service building and site to an indoor shooting range and two variants to deviate from the City Code section, allowing parking within three feet of Broadway. Staff report.
Yeah, this, tonight's request is by Dick Rude. He's the property owner of the building. And the 0.8 acre site located at 1540 Broadway, located in eastern Placerville. The site and the Broadway access sit below in elevation from, and south of US 50. Hangtown Creek bisects the southern one-third of the site. East and west of the site are commercial uses. South and north of the site are dispersed, single-family homes. Site improvements consist of a former commercial auto service building with approximately 11,000 square feet of floor area. The northern one-third of the site has asphalt paving up to the Broadway right-of-way. An existing pole sign cabinet and two pole support structure is located near the northwest corner of the site. Development history of the site dates back to 1964, when the planning commission at that time approved a conditional use permit, 64-01. Just a point of note, it's, it's the first one in our logbook. The very first one. 64-1. And that was for a vehicle tire recapping and brake alignment business, what we call auto service. And the city issued a building permit that year for a 5,100 square foot building for that auto service use. In 1966, in 1969, and in 1971, permits were issued for additions to the building and the auto service use, while in 1975, a pole sign and the two supports that are there now were installed with a permit. The sign cabinet for the pole sign was replaced in 1984, and then again in 1996. The site plan review request is to develop the site by changing the building occupancy by converting the existing auto service building into an indoor shooting center to be called the Hangtown Range. The center would consist of 10 25-yard shooting lanes that can accommodate handguns and rifles for target shooting, with two of the lanes designated and designed to also accommodate optional virtual reality shooting. The firearm lanes would involve interior building modifications. These include the construction of new interior walls consisting of concrete mason block units filled with concrete, heavy gauge metal plates deflectors that would be attached to a new ceiling deck to deflect off-target bullets to the floor. Air and exhaust ventilation would be installed to control exposure to lead fumes and dust during firearm shooting. A bullet trap and catch container would be installed for spent bullets at the target end of the range. Bullets would be disposed of through a licensed recycler. These improvements would adequately contain projectiles and noise range to the interior of the facility. The center would also include seven 20-yard shooting lanes separated from the firearm lanes to accommodate archers. A retail and registration area would be added within the building where ammunition, targets, ear protection, and of course, access to the range would be sold. The center would also have a waiting area, a training and classroom area, lockers, and restrooms. Exterior changes, which are Figure Four of, of the staff report to the building include new aluminum storefront windows with transom windows, a new covered entry structure using heavy timbered and exposed truss construction. The former auto service bay doors along the Broadway elevation would be infilled with metal siding to match the existing building exterior, or were indicated on the site plan, a combination of metal siding and new aluminum windows. New wall sconces would provide exterior lighting around the building for user enjoyment and security. Building exterior and its metal roof would be repainted using a two-color scheme. That color scheme was not provided to staff, but the property owner did inform us that the colors would be similar to those used at their Mosquito Creek Outfitters building located at Broadway Court and Mosquito Road. Approximately 113 square feet of sign area is proposed for the center, and these consist of two signs. Sign elevations were provided for you in, in the report. A new 40-square-foot non-illuminated wall sign would be placed on the existing roof dormer that faces out towards Broadway. And the existing pole sign and its, and its cabinet, that would be refaced, but no modifications are proposed to the cabinet. City permit records indicate that the existing pole sign cabinet is 18 feet 2 inches wide by four, four feet in height, or approximately 73 square feet. New site improvements include the creation of two formalized driveway accesses to Broadway, which would eliminate the uncontrolled access that, that the site currently has. Striping for 38 parking spaces would be provided, two loading zone areas, and painted path of travel for disabled access out to the Broadway right-of-way. New 6-inch concrete curbing would extend along Broadway that would delineate the new landscape islands proposed within the new parking area. Two of the three new landscape islands would contain 15-gallon London plane trees. A new split-face block propane tank screen wall and trash enclosure with solid metal box-ribbed gates would be constructed. The western driveway access would be limited to entrance only due to inadequate site distance looking west from this access. The curvature of Broadway at that location and the existing improvements on the neighboring motel property limit the ability of drivers to adequately see oncoming traffic going eastbound along Broadway. The eastern driveway access, however, would accommodate both inbound and outbound vehicle traffic, meeting our 24-foot aisle width or driveway width required. And so adequate site distance exists at that location. The, the range would be open daily. Specific hours of operation had not been disclosed to staff as of the preparation of this report. The Hangtown Range would create a recreational sport facility use. This use meets the definition of what's called, quote-unquote, "a place of entertainment" under City Code. And that's defined as a facility for theater, dance, sports, or other amusements. The site is located within what is called the highway commercial zone, and entertainment establishments are permitted use in the highway commercial zone as being allowed by right. The proposed use is therefore consistent with City Code. The applicant requests a variance to allow a deviation from Code Section 1044(c)(2), which requires a minimum of three feet distance between a parking area and a street right-of-way. The applicant seeks authority to park as close as one foot from the Broadway right-of-way to meet his intent to provide adequate parking for the range. But due to site constraints, the project's ability to fully meet parking lot shading and meeting other landscape criteria under site plan review would not be met. The site is constrained by the existing building's placement within the site and its proximity within the property to the Broadway right-of-way. Also, that Hangtown Creek bisects the property, and that the southern portion of the site is at the base of the hill. These factors make it difficult for the applicant to meet their objective and intent and comply with all of the city's regulations and design criteria under site plan review. Based on these site constraints, the variance request appears reasonable to staff. City Code requires the installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk and paving when construction of or the addition to any off-site parking facility in the city are to be completed, when the result of the off-street parking affects an increase in the density or use of the property, or affects an increase in traffic generation on the adjoining street. Staff, however, was unable to conclusively determine whether the shooting range would increase traffic onto Broadway absent the preparation of a traffic study. Therefore, the request would not trigger the requirement of street frontage improvements in accordance with City Code Section 8-9-3. Project signing does not exceed the maximum quantity and aggregate sign area requirements under city regulations. The signs are well-related to each other, sharing common colors, font, graphics, and arrangement, making them harmonious to each other within the site, which is a consistent criteria under the site plan review, design criteria. Proposed improvements to the exterior of the building and the site are consistent with other site plan review design criteria, in that they provide visual interest to the site, improve the overall character and condition of the building. The exterior wall lighting around the building is functional and meets required shielding and light intensity regulations under City Code. The trash containers and propane, excuse me, trash container and propane tank would be screened from view, which is also a design criteria under site plan review, using decorative materials. The new mechanical equipment is located to the rear of the building or where it's roof-mounted is screened from the public view by the existing roof parapet that runs along the rib or the, the ridge of the, of the building itself. However, despite site constraints, there are opportunities to further enhance the site and to substantially offset the reduction in landscaping that the variance request, if it is approved, would cause to be eliminated. Project conditions will require the installation and maintenance of low-growing shrubs within a new landscape area where no landscape plants were shown. The addition of trees and shrubs to the area of the site bounded to the east of the propane tank and trash enclosure, to the south by Hangtown Creek, and to the north by the parking lot. And also, the city requests the condition adding a field or split-rail fence along the, the to-be-constructed 6-inch concrete curb that'll delineate the Broadway right-of-way and the parking area, strung between the eastern edge of Parking Space 24 to the western edge of Space 31, and between the eastern edges of Parking Space 32 to the western edge of Space 36, as notated on your site plan. The request was analyzed and would be consistent with the relevant goals and policies within the land use, the health and safety, and the community design sections of the general plan that staff has provided on Pages 8 and 9 of staff's report. And this is due to the, in that the intensity of the land use would not exceed the 1,000 people per acre policy that's, that's within the, the Placerville Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. The use would provide an indoor entertainment opportunity that is not being provided currently in the Placerville area, therefore consistent with general plan land use policy. The request as condition would meet the general plan goal and policy of the community design section by repurposing a vacant auto service building and the site by improving its outward of character and appearance from the street. Also, the effect of the request upon its completion, when it's constructed and final, and final inspected, would result in the abandonment of that 1964 conditional use permit that's on record for the auto service use, making it null and void. Due to the only, minor changes to the existed, existing building and its, and its exterior, as well as the site changes to the driveways and landscaping, the request is also exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff recommends the commission conditionally approve the request by first making the findings on Pages 10 and 11 of staff's report, subject to the conditions provided as Attachment 1. The property owner and applicant, Mr. Rude, is in the audience this evening, and I believe he wishes to speak to you tonight.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Questions for staff?
Andrew, I didn't look up City Code that you referenced in here, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that City Code 10-4-4 (C)(2) is the requirement for three feet. Okay. And so staff is willing to allow parking of one foot? That's, that's as close as they can get to Broadway, is that correct?
That's what they've shown on the site plan, yes.
Okay, so is it staff's impression that that should be a requirement, a conditional requirement? How, how do you think that we should deal with that?
They're requesting a variance, so to allow that encroachment up to that one foot.
Okay.
So by approving the variance, then it would be authorizing that parking up to one foot.
Okay, so I, right, I get that.
Okay.
And then the question then becomes, is there any kind of delineation that we need to be concerned about to make sure it's clear, clear to people who are using it as to where that is? We can address that in our deliberations? Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
Can you rephrase, please?
Well, I'll, I'll come back to it in a moment.
I had one question, and that has to do with the, on the, the frontage improvements as well, and that is, the city's upper Broadway bike lanes project, and the, it's noted on there, but how would that impact, how would this impact that, if, if at all? And then it also states the construction of sidewalks is not yet programmed. Is that something that would, at some point, be contemplated? And if so, I would assume that would not be able to happen there, because we're talking about essentially a one foot on the variance?
Director Revaus, I think, will respond to that.
Yeah, the variance is, is allowing an, an encroachment up to the city right-of-way, so, so you'll have one foot within the city right-of-way, so it will not disturb, preclude the ability of the city to construct the bike lanes and, and the sidewalk at some time in the future. Right now, we, we do have a program, CIP, Capital Improvement Project, to do the bike lanes, but not for the sidewalks, but we are planning for a sidewalk eventually will be constructed in that location.
Okay, thank you. Would the owner like to make comments?
Yes, thank you. I have a paper here that was asked to be submitted. My name is Dick Rude. This is my wife, Darlene. We own the property, and we're obviously in, trying to build this indoor shooting range here in Placerville. Excuse me. I'd like to give a little brief history, if I might, about what's been going on here. Oh, back about a year and a half ago or so, actually, probably two years ago, we started thinking about a place for people to shoot to help accommodate the, the sales at the Mosquito Creek Outfitters. And I looked around for property to do an outdoor range, and it just wasn't financially doable for us. So I kind of gave it up. But then in my wanderings, I drove by the old tire exchange up there and thought, gosh, let me look at that. So I got hold of the owners, I got a key, and went in and looked around, and thought, gosh, this is sure a big building. What would I do? What would I do with all of it? So I thought and talking about it with my wife and what have you, and my son. And so I got access to the building again, and I measured it, and I put it on paper. And it was actually a perfect fit for what we were trying to do. It had plenty of room to do a 10-lane shooting range, which I wouldn't have wanted to do anything less. We had a room to do an eight-lane archery lane, which there's a lot of shooters, archery shooters out in this area, you know? And gave us, you know, two training rooms that we can open up into one large training room or conference room or whatever somebody needs to use it for. And we have a large waiting room for people to wait for, hopefully to go shoot, you know? During that time, I did quite a bit of research. I went to several of the ranges in the Sacramento area, the indoor ranges. I went to Texas to talk to some people down there that had built ranges, indoor ranges, and got a lot of good information. I went to Las Vegas, met with some range people that designed range equipment and actually do the, designed the ranges. Got a lot of information from the NRA, from the NSSF. There was just a ton of stuff out there for an indoor shooting range. During this course of probably six months or better, talked to a lot of people. And I have to say, I never got one negative response to an indoor shooting range in the Placerville area. Everybody was absolutely excited and enthused to have it. So with that, decided to go ahead with this project. I heard my wife mumble one day, idiot, you know? But other than that, we moved ahead. So basically, we made a deal with the property owners to purchase the property. And that opened up a big can of worms. A lot of homeless problems. The police were up there two or three times a week chasing the homeless out of there. At one time, we hauled two dump trucks' loads of trash that the homeless people had just brought in there and left out of the place. So it was a real, it was a kind of a real nightmare to work with that. And hired a surveyor to survey and locate the property markers for me. Well, what that brought about, there apparently was a lost easement that was dedicated to the state way back in 1932, if I remember right. And over the course of the years, the state gave it to the county, the county gave it to the city. Well, it was a 50-foot easement from the center of Broadway onto that property, which virtually eliminated any parking that could ever be done on any of those buildings up in that area. And it was so convoluted, part of the property that I was buying, there was a wedge that went clear out to the middle of Highway 50. So I thought, well, maybe we can put up a toll gate or something there, I don't know. So with the help of our insurance, our real estate people, the city, the city manager, the city attorneys, the surveyor, and numerous other people in numerous meetings over a six-month period, we finally came to an agreement on how to resolve this property line issue. So there was quick claims that were flying back and forth to get rid of, you know, who owned this and who will give it to that. And it was something that was beyond me, I'll tell you. So basically, that was a deal breaker. If that couldn't have been done, that piece of property would be sitting there in a worse case of disrepair than ever. It had probably been filled with homeless people, and there was no takers, believe me, you know? So I don't know if this was a great deal or not, but anyway. It's worked for me. It's going to work for the city. It's going to be a great asset to the city, I believe. And all of the feedback I've got from people, they're chomping at the bit to get, for us to get this thing open. So here we are, six months later. That's what it took to resolve the property line issues. And during that course, during that, after that process, let me go back a step. It took us six months to take care of the property line issues. So after that was all taken care of, and everybody was agreeable to this compromise, we closed escrow on the property and started to proceed with a reconstruction plan. So by the time we turned the plans into the city for plan checking, it's been six months for us to get to this point. You know, it's a long time, you know? But here we are, the last final step to hopefully get approval on this project that's going to be good for Upper Broadway, it's going to be good for the city, and God, I hope it's good for us. You go on Upper Broadway, as you gentlemen know, it's not real pretty up there, that shopping center that's half-empty up there. It's loaded with homeless, you know? The police had so many calls up there, from what I understand. They opened a substation up the upper end of that shopping mall up there, hopefully to help the problems. I don't know if it has or not. I mean, a lot of them are walking back and forth. So all in all, I can't see a downside to this project at all. I do have a couple of issues, you know? When we went in for the plan check, which cost me over $2,000 bucks, I thought that was pretty reasonable, you know? I had to combine, there was two parcels. And so I had to combine those because that's what the city required. That cost me over $2,000. So I didn't gain anything from that, you know? I had the property before, I have the property now, so... But anyway, that was done. The permit for this planning meeting was $5,000. And that just seemed high to me. There was other fees involved, and we still have a building permit fee to pay when, after all of this gets approved. So it hasn't been an inexpensive little venture, believe me. And maybe that's why my wife mumbles around a lot, I don't know, you know? We had an unfortunate situation where the tree fell off the side of the hill onto the eastern end of the building and crashed right down through it. Just somebody was looking over our shoulder, that nobody got hurt. It was just a miracle. So that caused us some delay, but we're back on, we're back working on that. I'm fighting with the insurance company because they want to delay the claim, but that's another issue. The things that I have that are really kind of rubbing me, I guess, is the split rail fence along the street property line. I don't think there's another fence along that street property line in the city of Placerville. It's going to be a haven for the homeless to sit on, to dry their clothes on, to do whatever they do. And I'm sure everybody that runs into it is going to leave me a card saying sorry, and I'll be glad to pay for it, you know? So I think that, I think that fence is really a bad deal. It opens up me up to a lot of liability issues and a huge maintenance issue. And if the city mandates that, I think it's ironic that the city takes no liability on it, but according to some of the papers that I've signed. So the fence, I think we need to try to work around that. Trees on the south of the parking, between the parking and the hill, there's some trees and some shrubbery that's being asked to be put in there. We've got a whole hillside full of trees and shrubbery, you know, 20 feet behind that, just on the other side of the creek. I would agree to changing the fence that's back there. Right now, it's a chain-league-type fence, six feet tall, whatever. I would agree to change that to what we have as a corral fence on the other part of the building. I would agree to put a corral fence in there. And we've got wire mesh behind it to keep people from crawling through it. And it is aesthetically better. So I would agree to do that. The other thing is that you're asking for a landscape and an irrigation plan for two trees and a small planter along that, the highway area. And, gosh, do you want me to hire a landscaper to do that? You know, I'm asking the question, I think it's an overkill. So those are kind of our history here and what we're up against at this 12th hour. So if you have questions?
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Rude?
One question. If I'm walking along the street, what's the noise level going to be from inside?
It'll, if the noise level be worse from the road and Highway 50 than you'll ever hear from the range.
Okay. Would you agree to some other type of fence other than the split rail fence? As an example, not long ago, we passed a fence along the front of a parking lot for Mr. Howe down here at CNS Auto. And it was a metal chain, if I'm not mistaken. Would that be, would you like something like that instead?
Would that be like a post with the chains?
Less maintenance?
Be less maintenance, it'd be probably better than a split rail fence, but...
Firewood?
I just think any fence along there is probably inconsistent with the rest of Placerville.
Okay. Would you prefer, yeah, I'm answering my own question here. Would you prefer that we leave it open, that you provide some kind of fencing along the front edge?
Got to think about that.
Well, right now, it calls for a split rail fence.
Right, I understand.
And I'd much rather have you come up with a solution than us.
If you're going to require a fence, yes, I would like to work with the city, Andrew or Pierre or whoever, and try to come up with something that I can agree to better.
Okay.
Staff, in staff's report on page five, it says the request involves the creative adaptive reuse of an existing commercial service building. And I really agree with that. I think what you're proposing is really an exciting project. Having said that, I just, I think we need to come back to staff with regards to the fence because while it's proposed, I missed that it wasn't being proposed by the applicant, but it's being proposed by staff, I guess. So, Mr. Rude, can you offer what the planned hours of operation are going to be for the facility?
Approximately, probably nine or 10:00 in the morning to maybe seven or eight:00 in the evening, something like that.
Okay.
It's kind of fluid right now. We're just going to, we'll see how the, what the people that are going to use it, what they want. You know, we certainly won't be staying late in the evening by any means, or too early in the morning either. You know, there just won't be a demand for that.
Right. Are there other regulatory agencies involved? Alcohol, tobacco, firearms, or anyone else for this type of an operation? I'm just asking that for my own consideration.
Yeah, there's a firearm regulations, and we do have a new FFL license for firearms for that location.
And do they provide any conditions of operation on you?
Not really. Let me ask my son, he's got the license. Anything?
No, they don't put any regulations, just hours of operation.
No, no, they're, that's kind of up to us, you know?
Okay. And I guess it's, last time I've been on a shooting range was a marksmen's class in college, but I did pass. Point that out.
You need practice.
Lots of it. It's safe to, it's safe to assume, though, that pretty much everyone that's coming to use this facility is armed, right? They're going to be, they're bringing their own firearms with them, right?
Well, not necessarily, because we will have rental firearms available. And part of the thing is, we get a lot of people at the Mosquito Creek Outfitters, mainly ladies, that like a firearm, but they're just not sure.
Sure.
And so they would like to try one out before they purchased it. And so we can offer that opportunity to them up at the range because we'll have similar firearms there for rent.
That's really smart. That's a good plan. And I guess I was kind of going to whether or not the city police department needed to comment on something, given the type of activity. Again, I support the project. I'm simply asking from not knowing much about it.
The police department have signed off on it, by the way.
Okay, all right. I do want to revisit the fencing issue. We can talk about that with staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One, just one follow-up on Commissioner List's comments in terms of the sound. Is it the type of material that sort of deadens the? I just don't want to have to come back, like, you know, everything's approved, and then we start getting complaints on noise. So I'm just wondering what the, what deadens the sound?
Right, well, you know, we're building a concrete block enclosure inside of the existing enclosure, you know? Excuse me. And then there's ceiling plates for deflecting the bullets down, so nothing can go up. And part of those ceiling plates have sound-absorbing material. And basically, where the shooters are shooting, there's a lot of sound-absorbing material in that area because that's where most of the sound is generated. And so if, like I say, you've got to stand up there and listen to the motorcycles and the trucks race up Broadway, and that's almost like a racetrack once they come around the turn. And, you know, there's just, and plus, the people that I've hired to do, to build or to design the shooting range, that's what they do. And so this is basically all based on their design as far as sound and all of that.
If it helps the commission, think about, it's a building within a building. The way Mr. Rude's described it, it's actually a building within the current exterior framework of the old auto service center. If that kind of helps, helps understand.
There were two other things that, or at least one other thing I wanted to touch on. Certainly sympathetic to the amount of money that it costs to get to this point. Actually, having seen the planning application fee, I'm going to recommend to the chairman that we push for a raise for sitting up here. But having...
Sorry, I brought that up.
Having said that, with regards to the landscaping, you need to appreciate that, A, this is a requirement for all businesses, essentially, in Commercial District, that's one. Two, and as you've kind of indicated, we are trying to improve the Broadway area. And simply by having a different business than where the tire recapping business was before doesn't necessarily, in and of itself, provide the improvement. Of course, we're happy to have the business and happy to have this particular enterprise. But also, some aesthetic improvements, I don't think are unreasonable. We'll see what we can do with regards to how sophisticated the landscaping plan has to be because, as you indicated, with just the two trees, you know, it shouldn't be too substantial. And like, I would think that you should just be able to do that by yourself. The city has pretty much said, plant two London plane trees here. So it's about, it's about as sophisticated as digging a hole and making sure you can get some water to them, and...
If it's something we can do ourselves, that's fine.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think it really is terribly onerous. It sounds really onerous, but I don't really think it's that bad. But the agreement says you are responsible for making sure that it's maintained and looks nice. How you do that? You don't have to do a major landscape design for this. Nowhere near as extensive as what you did for the Mosquito Outfitters project, which is, that's a fairly complex and very attractive landscape. Nothing like that's being proposed for this site. So just wanted to point that out.
You know, that's, you know, I agree it has to be maintained. You know, there's no, I certainly don't want a dead tree sitting out there in the front of our business, you know? So I don't have a problem with whatever staff requires as far as a maintenance agreement, as long as it's something that maybe we can, it doesn't, I don't have to hire a landscaper. I don't have to hire a landscaper type of thing. That's kind of all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Do we have any other comments from the public on this, on this project? Again, if you'd like to voluntarily state your name.
Evening. My name is Peter McQuillan. I'm a broker with Team Commercial Real Estate. We've been kind of involved with Dick and Darlene. We're pretty familiar with the trials and tribulations, including the fallen tree. As a commercial realtor, I can tell you, there weren't a lot of people clamoring for that building. This use, I think, is perfect for that. And I just hope that the city will help him do this and not let perfect be the enemy of good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're good. Oh, yes.
I am, actually. Hi, my name is Myra Louder, and I am actually one of the 4-H leaders for El Dorado County for our Shooting Sports, for our youth program. This is the first time in about eight years that Shooting Sports has actually been brought back to El Dorado County, and my husband and I lead a project along with two other leaders in the county. We are also in the process of trying to get our own 501-3C for a youth gun club organization. I currently have a 12-year-old daughter and a 17, I'm sorry, she just turned 18-year-old daughter, who are incredible shots. My 12-year-old wants to go to the Olympics and wants to get a shooting scholarship. In order to do that, she needs to practice. And while we've been shooting in an outdoor range, which is great, and they've been really great to work with us, unfortunately, with the weather restrictions, that kind of inhibits us. I've actually been into Mosquito a few times, not for a while, but I've been in there before, and they've really shown a lot of support to really want to support a youth organization. There are thousands upon thousands of dollars in scholarships for college for shooting sports. And I think that anything that we can do to support our youth in this community is absolutely wonderful, and they're willing to do that. I absolutely love the fact that as a female shooter, that if I do find a firearm that I like and I'm not familiar with it, I would have the opportunity to go try that out and see if that is the right firearm for me. So whatever you guys can do to support them, just know that in turn, underlining, you're also supporting the youth of our county as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll bring this back, close the public comment portion and bring this back to the Can we review the fence requirement just a little bit more in terms of the, kind of the thought behind the, what's in the report right now, at least what's-
Sure. Yeah, the site plan review, design criteria, there are some, some of the criteria address the relationship, the streetscape, for lack of a better word, and the transition from the street to the site. And with the removal of, the three foot would be a perfect opportunity. So let's say, take the variance off the table, that three foot of distance between the right-of-way and the parking would have been adequate to provide at least some ground cover, perhaps some shrubs. Probably wouldn't be large enough for a street tree. They typically want more land. So with the variance request, and we certainly understand and can appreciate the site constraints that the site has. And so as I reflected in my oral testimony, staff does support the variance request. But to soften, I guess this gets to your point, your question to me. The nexus or the genesis of why fencing was proposed. We think that the fence would help soften that transition between the street and the That we would have gotten to some extent, had we retained that three-foot distance between the right-of-way and the parking aisle. A fence would be, and we're not asking for an elaborate fence, we're asking for a fence that would allow, still allow the seeing through of the fence. It's generally open, by a vast percentage of the fences open, so it still allows for a view into the site. But it does help soften the cars parked, or would be parked, in adjacent to that city right-of-way. So it would almost serve as a way, or a symbol or two, a vegetative barrier, so to speak. In this case, we're not requesting a very high fence. It could be quite small, actually, and I think three, three and a half feet is probably all that's needed. So that's kind of really the nexus behind the fence. Does that, does that help?
My concern was that split rail fence looked real nice on opening day. A year later, people sitting on them, people walking, you know, around them, they end up being broken. It's a burden on the owner. I think that was one of the questions that we talked about with the Howe project. And that was why I brought that up, is can we come up with some kind of, between the city and the owner, can we come up with something that is not an expensive fence, but is something that is durable and will give us that break that we were looking for, that you're looking for, yet allow it to be open? And I think that, thinking back to the, what we came up with, or what was designed for the Howe project, would do that kind of thing. And I think that's an agreement that could be worked out between the city and the owner. Matter of fact, Mr. Root, the, I think, is it Ms. Wilson back on the back row is the one that designed that fence, so you may want to see her.
You're referring to the rock, the rock wall, the-
Yeah, it was a rock wall and some kind of a fencing. I don't remember exactly what it was.
Originally, we had even proposed a kind of a pole and chain-
Right.
-kind of delineation. Decorative, as long as it's decorative, that's fine. So we don't want chain link of any kind.
Right.
Yeah, due to the limited space in there, I don't know if we have adequate room for a dry stack wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know if we have enough room for that, but that's why, that's why a wood fence. I'll be honest with you, I think staff would rather hear the direction from the commission as to what material you would like to see. Then we can work with the applicant as to maybe its height, or its spread, or et cetera. Because technically, this really needs to come from you. You need to approve the materials that are proposed and/or the aesthetic of it as it exists on the site, or would be expected to be, exist on the site. But certainly, we can work with the applicant, if it's the direction of the commission, to require some sort, I hate to use the word barrier, but that's kind of what it is. But with a split rail as a concept, again, as I said earlier, it does allow you to see through it. It's not a solid, it's not even a chain link. Chain link has a much smaller, as we all know. And then, of course, a solid fence would preclude any kind of view into the site. Yes, it would screen perhaps some of the vehicle, or vehicles, but I don't think those would be as decorative as a simple fence. But I understand the concern about the maintenance, but if this were to be approved and conditioned, then it would be incumbent upon the applicant to maintain the site plan. And this would be considered a component of the landscape, and so it would be part of the landscape maintenance agreement.
My concern is, I don't want to dictate design to them. I want to leave it open enough that they have some flexibility in the way that they solve the problem. And I, I guess I'm trying to give enough direction to you that you understand that we want some kind of, or I'm asking for some kind of a permanent solution to the problem versus what, in a wooden fence, I consider it a temporary solution to the problem.
So Commissioner, what I might offer for discussion, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, we could perhaps set minimum, a minimum standard. It should be at least this, and then allow the applicant and staff to work something out. And to that end, what I would propose would be a pole and chain, with both the pole and chain having to be of a decorative nature, which means the poles are not galvanized, right? Not a strictly galvey pole and not a strict galvanized chain. So you'd have a decorative chain and a simple decorative pole. That's pretty simple to do. I do support the staff's contention that particularly since we allow, we're going to allow the variance of only one feet, you know, from Broadway, even with a sidewalk curb and gutter that may come in the future, I think it's really important to have that kind of barrier, we'll call it a barrier, for lack of a better word. I'm also sensitive to the applicant in terms of creating an attractive nuisance for the population that's endemic to that part of Broadway. And so I think that this pole and chain would probably be a lot less likely to attract them than would the split rail. And I concur with your comments about the maintenance and so on and so forth. Andrew?
Yeah, the other reason behind the genesis of the wood product or the wood material is because the applicant is proposing a more decorative entrance to the building with exposed trusses, and I was trying to kind of reflect that out towards the street. So that's the other reason behind perhaps a wood product as opposed to, were you stretching for the word "ballard" perhaps?
Not necessarily. But I'll tell you, the color that I would call out would be gunmetal, obviously. Right? It'd be gunmetal. That's one of my favorite colors, particularly in automotive applications. So I think there's some ways that we can work around that.
Another, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Another question in this area. In the city right-of-way, on the other side of this fence, we are proposing, or it's being proposed, at some point, there's going to be a curb and gutter. Will there be, will people be able to park on that side at this point? Is there a no parking along that, is there going to be a no parking along that whole stretch? Or can cars park along that side of the street?
I don't think I have an answer for you. I'm not sure of the parking regulations on the street at that location. Considering that site does not have a delineated, really, where the right-of-way is or begins, it's a free-for-all. I don't know if the city's contemplated specific regulations for that section. However, I would think that when and if this Upper Broadway project that the director mentioned earlier, when it comes to fruition, that would be the time when the city would be evaluating that issue, or that concern, or that question as to whether or not parking can also accommodate the bike lane. Because sometimes those don't, those don't gel very well.
Well, sometimes those are way off in the future, even though they-
That's correct, too, yes.
And my question was, between now and then?
Between now and then? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Stump the Stars tonight.
Yeah, if we only had the city engineer tonight, if we only had her.
I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners what your reaction is to providing some parameters for hours of operation. And I'm looking at 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which I think is more than what the applicant indicated they're presently using, but at least to provide some parameters around that. Just give it a consideration.
Once again, I think that common sense is going to, they're going to have them open the hours that people are willing to use it. And I don't like to put restrictions when it doesn't seem to be an issue.
If staff could make a statement to that effect, Mr. Chairman, this is a site plan review and not a conditional use permit. So the limitations really is more on the aesthetics, meaning the design criteria of a development guide, zoning, development standards and the like, not placing conditions on the use.
Thank you for that. I misspoke.
Yeah, if it was a conditional use permit, I think that would certainly be a-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I still like the idea of maybe providing some minimal guidance on the fencing. I'm also in agreement that I don't, I actually like the idea of a sort of post and chain decorative, like a heavy gauge chain, although I don't want to, you know, I want to be able to give the applicant as much freedom as possible to do that, but to the extent that we could come up with sort of minimum requirements there. Because I do believe there should be a barrier, again, for lack of a better term, but the least, you know, to make it as easy as possible for the applicant. And certainly, I think a post and chain would certainly withstand the weather and time better certainly than a wood fixture would do. And probably also dissuade folks from sitting on it and using it as a place to dry clothes. So, you know, perhaps we can kind of give that minimum requirement. I certainly love the idea of this project as a whole. I think, again, as opposed to people going down to Sacramento and enjoying those facilities, it's great, especially since we have a very strong, you know, sporting enthusiast here, both for archery and for shooting. So I'd like to be able to provide that guidance without it being as prescriptive as what's in the current staff report.
I just want to point out that on all of the materials that were provided to us, with regards to condition 8, 8C, page isn't numbered, where it says a minimum of two native trees and multi-species of native shrubs, really the only thing that's indicated on the plan are the two trees. There's really no specific plantings of native shrubs or whatnot. So I would scratch the native shrubs, and then we would modify the language indeed dealing with the fence.
I have a, just a clarification to that, if I may.
Go ahead.
If I may, member friend.
Of course.
8C is really specifying a specific planter island that has no species identified at all in it. It has nothing to do with the two trees that the applicant is proposing.
I didn't see it, I didn't see it on a plan anywhere. I didn't see it delineated.
The applicant did not prepare a specific landscape plan, but the site plan includes, I think it's the first one, A, one-
I see two, I see the two trees.
Yeah, that's, right.
The two trees I've got.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see any other specific area for plantings.
Yes, it's the eastern encroachment. You see the planter island, where the, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I get you. All right. I get you. I see what you're saying. So, all right, we'll have to figure out what we want to deal with that.
If I can maybe assist, I think you're going to 8D next with the fencing. If I could just ask you, are you, are you okay with the specifications on where you would want to see some sort of barrier, as, for lack of a better word, or fence, as I've described it in the condition? Is that the area where you envision, you as a group? Okay, great.
Yes.
For Commissioner Friend, the only thing is that, corrections that you'd like to make to that, I'd like to have you make them in the form of a motion, so we're not-
Yeah, I'm just kind of throwing ideas out there to see where folks are at in terms of, but I did miss the planters on the eastern driveway. And I think having some aesthetics there is not necessarily a bad thing.
I'd just like to say, what a great improvement this will be for that section of Broadway. You know, I drive up there quite a bit, and I'm going, what in the world can we do with this? Thank you for being creative. That's-
Yeah, I think we're going to have to ask him to come. I think it's only fair for the public record, for folks to hear the deliberation. I do think now, my attention's been pulled over to this eastern driveway, and I think that is an opportunity to have something of attractive, similar, but nowhere near as sophisticated as what he's got at Mosquito Outfitters. sophisticated as what he's got at Mosquito Outfitters, that we should, it would not be inappropriate to ask them to come back with a, with a plan that shows what they're going to put in. They should put something there, show us what they're going to put in there. We have the opportunity for some aesthetics along, this is a fairly large frontage, and so we should not lose the, the opportunity for the aesthetic improvement. That, I think that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point.
So, the question is, can we, can we keep the project moving and...
I'm sorry, the, the public, the public portion has been closed. I was, I'm sorry, the, the public portion's been, been closed.
Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, that, I think, I think that's, that's where I would go. So, with, with regards... Yeah, so with regards to 8, we will ask them to provide, come back with the landscape and irrigation, that, that show what they're going to do for the two, I mean, the trees are being called out for them, so that's, that's kind of like a no-brainer from my perspective. But then what they're going to do in those driveway planters, and maybe even something underneath the trees, they could do something if, if they're so inclined. Okay, and then... Very, look at the south parking spaces on the sheet, 17 through 23. Yeah, I think there are some opportunities here. And then with regards to D, the applicant shall provide a barrier, barrier slash fence that at a minimum would consist of decorative, decorative, decorative pole and chain, post and, post, not pole, post, 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 post and, or a chain, because a rail. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Rail, rail or chain.
Post rail, chain, post, okay.
Yeah.
As long as it's decorative, then that's fine. So, folks comfortable with something along those lines, then?
That's, yes, that sounds, I think that sounds in line with what we've been...
And, and they can work that out with, they can work that out with staff.
Can, can staff ask a question as to...
The public portion's been closed.
Material, the post material, were you, was the commission thinking of a wood post? Metal post?
It could be, it could be, it could be wood, it could be metal, as long as it's decorative. As, as long as it's not a simple galvanized pole and chain, right?
Okay.
I think we'll leave it open, as long as it's decorative at that point, and I think we should give as much flexibility to the applicant as possible. And can, can you work within those parameters, do you think?
I think I understand.
The intent?
Yeah. Do you have a specific, perhaps, height of this that, that you would want to see?
I'd, I'd probably limit it to 30, 36-inch, as, as you called out, no more than 36.
Thank you.
Probably be between 24 and 36, I would think. And if he uses a chain kind of thing, it might start at 36, you know, drop down to, down to 24, whatever, as it sways or whatever. So, okay, something along those lines? We're good with that?
Perhaps colors to, colors of the posts to reflect or be complementary to the colors proposed on the building?
Correct, yeah. It should tie, it should, to the extent possible, tie in aesthetically to the frontage of the, of the building.
So, decorative and complementary to the architecture? All right, so...
Do we have enough for a motion?
I was just about to make one. So, I would move that we approve Site Plan Review 1703 and Variance 1701 for the project located at 1540 Broadway, adopting the staff report as part of the public record and the findings as specified on page 10 of the staff report through page 11. And then the conditions of approval, as indicated in Attachment 1, with modifications to Item 8, that 8...
D.
C, actually, we start with 8C. Let's see. No, you're, you're correct. We're not going to change C. Modifications to 8D, that the applicant shall work with staff to propose a suitable barrier slash fence that is comprised at a minimum of decorative materials compatible with the proposed architecture, a minimal construction of post and rail slash chain, no other conditions. That'd be my motion.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Is there sufficient, I'm sorry, sufficient direction for staff?
Is there, is there sufficient direction in that motion for staff?
Yes, thank you.
Discussion? All right, you want to call, roll?
Member Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Saragosa?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 3-0. Congratulations.
A comment on that last. I, I think they, the, they still need to submit a separate landscaping plan, that's, that's in the condition. Does that have to come back to us, or can they work directly with you for that, with staff?
The way it's worded, it would come back to us. As mentioned earlier...
That's fine with me.
This wasn't an extensive landscape area in which, so staff did not feel it incumbent to come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that's fine. Good luck, and thank you.
Okay, we're, we've tabled Item 6.1 until our next commission meeting, so we'll move on to Item 7, Matters from Commissioners and Staff. 7.1, anything from commissioners to announce?
The Bell Tower Brew Fest on Saturday. Come heat or more heat? Matters from staff.
Yeah.
Andrew, I will, I will not be available for meeting, the second meeting in July.
That would be the 18th.
That's correct.
So, that, that means we will also not be able to hear the tabled Item 6.1, so we'll have to delay that again.
Well, we do expect to have...
Commissioner Wolf?
Member Wolf back in the fold. So to speak. But if, I guess technically, we, I don't know if we can go back into Item 6.1 and actually, I guess we could. We could, you could change your, your motion to continue it, bring it up, then can do, continue it to the date certain, and it won't be until the August meeting, and because of National Night Out, would that be the 20? I don't have a calendar in front.
The second meeting, how staff's not requesting.
How, I mean, in, in terms of timing-wise, what does, if, if we're that far into August, does that pose any issues from staff, you know, providing this to the city council?
Let's just say that the council wants to receive this item, and so staff's recommendation, staff understands, I mean, staff would prefer to have at least four commissioners available to consider and debate, discuss, and then make a recommendation, but it doesn't have to be five.
Does, is it possible to do a, a special hearing so that we could get four members prior to, if Commissioner List isn't available on the 18th, perhaps a, a special meeting so we had all four members prior to the second, you know, the, that third week in August?
Staff prefers not to do a special meeting for this item. It doesn't rise to that level of importance for the cost and the time involved for staff. My suggestion, Mr. Chairman, would be we have it continued until the July 18th meeting. If we have four commissioners at that meeting, we'll, we'll hear it. If we do not, then we'll just continue it to the next date certain meeting, and we'll do that and, and, and work on it until we, we get at least four members, and knowing that it's a priority for us, I think that's about the best we could do.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. If you're, if you're asking matters from staff, we, in addition to Item 6.1 that was continued, there will be two additional public hearing items, one of which will be a request for a sidewalk dining for a location. We have an applicant that's come forward. There's also a request to extend a, the site plan review for a previously approved project. It's nearing its expiration date, and the applicant is requesting a 12-month extension, and that's for the Toad Hall project. I, perhaps, Member Friend may remember that one from quite a few years back.
She was, she was in the audience, was she not, a couple of meetings ago?
She was, yes.
Speaking, what was the, oh, she was speaking on the parklet, if I remember correctly.
Yes, correct.
She spoke on the parklet. I forget her name, but I'm glad to see that project...
Cindy Savage.
I'm glad to see that project has still got legs.
And, let's see, we anticipate having a, a meeting for that regularly scheduled 2nd August meeting. Once again, we will not hold a meeting on National Night Out, but we do expect having a zone change amendment regarding accessory dwelling units that will likely occur for that, due to changes, recent changes in state law. So, we need to update our, our ordinance to reflect those changes. I also want to, to note on a, a personal note, I just got back from vacation, and I'll keep this brief, but I went back to the East Coast, I went back to Maine, where my brother lives and family. And when I arrived, they live in a small town, and you may, you may know this, but New England towns have town meetings. And so, they, yes, they do have selectmen or selectwomen who serve somewhat as a representative government, but when it comes to budgetary items and, and items that involve expenditures of large, large amounts of money, the public votes, the public comes to the meeting, and you vote by show of hands or by ballot. So, it was fascinating to see that different dynamic involved, and there were some contentious items on that agenda. One of them was, was parking meters, and most of you who've been here quite some time remember that discussion that we had here downtown. The other item was the, the town was, and I'll keep this brief, but they were proposing a resolution to become a sanctuary city. That, that brought out a very large crowd, for and against. And, so anyway, I just thought I'd, I'd share that with you. It's a fascinating experience if you ever get a chance to, to go, even though you think, my, you know, gosh, government meeting, why do I want to go there? But it is a completely different, completely different setup, the way it's done, the way it's run. It's, it was interesting. But anyway, I'll leave you, leave you, leave it at that.
I've been getting a lot of feedback on the parking situation in town, and not necessarily positive, but in, in terms of solution, maybe the city would consider granting three hours of, of free parking as opposed to the two, but that, that can go through another process. But for whatever it's worth, I usually don't get a whole lot of, of feedback, but I'm getting a lot of feedback, so.
Any other items? All right, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.